The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Ostrowski and I work in the Environmental Support Division of Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. And I welcome you all to our public hearing tonight for the 08-Delta Road, Delton Road project was submitted by the Berry County Drain Commissioner. Glad you all could be here. We are all broadcasting. I will make a special note that we are all broadcasting from our remote locations. So bear with us tonight as, just like you are, we're all broadcasting from our homes. So again, that's me, I'm the moderator for tonight, Jim Ostrowski. I'm just going to go over a few housekeeping guidelines. First of all, if you haven't noticed already, all lines are muted, which means that you can hear us, but we can't hear you at the moment. If you have a question tonight, I'm going to go over in detail how to ask questions. So you'll be seeing that in just a moment. So hang on for that. I want to let you all know that we are recording the webinar and we're posting it next few days and we'll let you all know when that occurs as well. If you look in the handouts tab on your GoToWebinar toolbar, you will find a couple of handouts for tonight. And those are handouts that the consultant provided us to provide to all of you. So you will be, you'll see those handouts under the handouts tab and you should be able to download them. They're also available in My Waters and we'll make sure we show you where you can get those there as well. I do know that we do, we may have people calling in using just the phone. So if you just called in using the phone number, you will not be able to do any more than just basically listen in. You cannot ask questions using the phone mode. But if you do need the handouts, again, we'll explain where to get those when the time comes tonight. Alright, so in terms of our agenda, I'm just doing some introductory remarks now. We're going to start this, this event is going to happen in like two parts. It's going to start with a presentation by the consultant. We invited him to do a quick presentation and then we're going to take some questions and answers for a few minutes. And we're going to do that Q and A session. That's your turn to ask some questions if you want to. But we really can only take Q and A up to about 6:30 because by 6:30, we have to start the official public hearing. And when we do the official public hearing, that's when we actually take comments for the record. So if you want your comment for the record, you do it during that time. The Q and A is not on the record. That's just questions and answers that you might have before we start the public hearing. And I'll make sure it's very clear when the official hearing starts. You will definitely know that. I will explain how to submit an official comment tonight and we'll wrap it up tonight by going over where to find additional information. So in terms of how the meeting is going to work, if you have a question, there's a couple of different ways to do that. If you prefer typing your question, you can do that. You're just going to use the question box on your GoToWebinar toolbar. So you should see that in front of you and I'll show you a picture of that in just a minute. If you have a question, you're going to type the word "question" and then type your question. If you have an official comment you'd like to make for the record, by typing it in tonight, you type the word "comment," then type your comment. We just have to keep those two things clear for what stays on the record and what doesn't go on the record. So if you want to make comment that way, you can do that. You can of course always submit your comments written via My Waters. And there's instructions on how to do that as well as you can email to Kelsey and I'll introduce Kelsey in just a moment. And don't worry, her email is going to pop up later on today if you missed that. So here's another just picture of how to ask a question. On your toolbar, you see there's a question box. You click that and you can type in a question, hit submit. That's going to come up to us and we'll get to those after the presentation. You can also ask a question by raising your hand. So if you have a mic, microphone, you know it works. Feel free to click the green arrow and that'll put your hand up and I will see that and I will call on you. And you will, I'll unmute your mic so you can ask your question. To put your hand down, you're going to click it when it's up. It'll have a little red arrow and that'll bring your hand down. Okay, just went over that. So introducing our staff here from Water Resources Division, Kelsey and Audrey. Do you want to introduce yourselves? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Krupp. I am the district representative for the Grand Rapids District Office tonight. And I am the staff person assigned to review the application we are here having the hearing for.
Hi, everyone. I'm Audrey Kirk. I'm the district supervisor for the Grand Rapids Office. The Grand Rapids Office covers nine counties, so Berry's one of the nine. Before Kelsey worked in Berry County, I actually covered Berry County and started covering Berry County in 2015. So I'm very familiar with Berry County and the Delton area. And also I wanted to mention that I will be, once we get into the formal comments, I will be keeping track. And so if you get a one-minute warning from me, please don't be offended. We're just trying to make sure we have time to get everyone in. So I will, each person will have five minutes to leave a formal comment and I will give you a one-minute warning.
Okay, thanks Audrey. Yep, so you'll be hearing from both of them later on tonight. Okay, with that, I am going to see if Brian is available. Hold on a second, Brian. I'm going to unmute your line. So Brian, can you hear us?
Yes, second.
Alright, great. So Brian, I'm going to bring up your slides. You might need to turn down your volume a little bit because I can hear a little echo. So hold on a second. You should see your slides. And so Brian, I'll let you introduce yourself and I'll advance your slides for you. So just go ahead and say next and I'll advance for you, okay?
Okay. Sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to use this. Okay, alright. Hi, I'm Cincy with GEI Consultants, the project engineer, working for the Berry County Drain Commissioner's office for both the Watson Drain and the Cloverdale Drain. And then with me as well down the line is Nick DeSemplar. He's another project engineer on this particular project. And Nick and I formerly up to end of this past year, 2019, worked at E and G. And started on both of these projects in 2018 when both of them were petitioned by residents for the to do maintenance and improvement on both the Watson Drain and Cloverdale Drain. And I think as well, Jim Dahl, the Berry County Drain Commissioner is on tonight too as well. So he'll hear everyone's comments at this hearing, so. So want me to get started?
Yeah, go right ahead. I'll advance your slides.
Okay, yep, you can flip through it. So these go to the first slide, just so you're aware too. These are dealing with two different drains and there's a whole separate thing associated with that that isn't part of this particular hearing. But we submitted one permit application because they're so interconnected with the work that's taking place and what's being proposed. So all we're going to go through, they gave me 10 minutes and I'm going to stick to that. So we're going to just go through the status of where we are with the work. An overview of what the proposed plan is in the permit application that was submitted. And then there have been, I think we're on our third correction request where the state's asking either for more information or clarification on things. And so we're going to go through what we are proposing based on our last correction request. And then just some key features of really what's the, in this particular application is part of the, both these drain projects. So if you go to the next slide. So right now, like I said, we are on a third correction request, a response. Correction request essentially is they want more, you know, the state is asking for more information in regards to like one of the items or impacts that we're proposing, for example. Or they may ask us to look at an alternative or to analyze something in particular that we might have not addressed or not fully addressed in the initial permit application. Very, very large permit application with a lot of items because it does cover a large area. Several water bodies, several different regulated wetland features and a lot of impacts to a lot of residents on the lakes in these particular areas. So one of the things with the correction request is we went through and did a more detailed analysis of the anticipated wetland impacts. Further assessment of the need to control structures and involve water bodies was the latest issue that we went through with the, with Eagle in regards to the correction request. They wanted further information about quantification of downstream impacts. So this is involving an application to essentially do, we consider emergency pumping from Upper Crooked Lake to the Delton Road Infiltration Basin, which has already been permitted and it's out there now and that pumping is occurring. But ultimately what we, this application has is then pumping from that basin north into essentially the Delton Marsh and then working north, there's the Cloverdale Chain of Lakes, that Long Lake. And this actually goes into Fall Creek, all the way up into the Thornapple River, right through the city of Hastings. So this application is to just do this pumping work associated with taking it out of the basin that we're currently pumping into, which is an infiltration basin. And then one of the items they want in particular was justification of the proposed drawdown for a level on Upper Crooked Lake. So real quick to point out too, this is not our long-term, what is going to be in place in 10 years or 20 years solution to resolving the high-water issue on Upper Crooked Lake, for example. This is to get the water down enough where right now it's, I believe it's at like 928.46, somewhere around in there, which is the highest we've seen it. This is to get it down enough so that our actual solution, which is to take this water south to a series of infiltration beds and infiltration systems to the south, south of Lower Crooked Lake, can actually handle the water that we're dealing with, with Crooked Lake being down enough so it's not near any dwellings or any houses or anything like that. Those infiltration systems just cannot handle that amount of water that we're dealing with initially for being up on Upper Crooked Lake. So with the correction request, the next step, like I said, we will go through the changes that we had. There's a public notice period ends at the end of May here. We're submitting our response to their correction requests and then Eagle will make a decision on the permit. So you can go to the next slide. So the proposed plan that we've laid out, just kind of a summary of it, is to install a new, improve the Long Lake outlet to allow for more effective response to rainfall. Essentially, both Long Lake and Cloverdale Lake right now are actually at their highest levels that we've seen since we've been measuring just about two years now throughout the area. So at the end of Long Lake, a lot of the level is controlled by basically a, it's a private crossing where two smaller pipes, they get clogged very easily and get a lot of weeds and vegetation. And that kind of dictates the level. This is actually to propose a new crossing and a box culvert there. So that's one of the improvements that we have. The second item is to improve the outlet between Cloverdale Lake and Long Lake. 120-plus years ago, I believe the information saw it used to be a sawmill between Cloverdale and Long. There's roughly around 15 feet of elevation difference between the water level of Cloverdale Lake being higher than the water level of Long Lake. Right now, it is a 10-inch tile, clay tile that connects the two lakes. So connects Cloverdale into Long. And that tile has been clogged and has, is currently diminished in capacity as well because it's got a portion of it that has some backfall and is clogged that we just can't get the impediment removed out of the area. So this is to improve that system so it actually has what would be a normal-sized outlet pipe to take the water from Cloverdale Lake into Long Lake. And that'll help improve the flood levels that take place on Cloverdale Lake right now. Right now, it takes a very long time for Cloverdale Lake to come down if, and we are actually doing what's called supplemental pumping through that, through that 10-inch tile to get the water down a little bit further. If not, it would, it would not respond at all to, to any of the changes we've had with rainfall to going down at all. The other part of the plan is to when the weather permits, so meaning once Long Lake and Cloverdale get down to more manageable levels, then that's where look to do this pumping on Upper Crooked Lake where we would need to take it from the Delton Road Basin, which we're already pumping to. We installed a second pump there and went through the permitting process and changes, permitting process and changes for that. Were somewhere around 5,000, potentially up to 6,000, excuse me, 5,000 gallons per minute in through there, going into the Delton Road Basin. That is about 600, 700 feet away to the north of Upper Crooked Lake. Once we get Long Lake and Cloverdale down a little bit, so we put those improvements in place with the new outlet for Cloverdale and the new crossing, which is controlling Long Lake's level. Then we look to start the pumping from that Delton Road Basin, which would then go into Delton Marsh, which is an 80-acre or so wetland just south of Jones Lake, which is part of the Cloverdale Chain of Lakes. And then once Upper Crooked Lake reaches a lower level, the long-term lake control proposed is again, the infiltration system to the south of Lower Crooked Lake, which this area naturally goes to the south, either to Spring Brook or to to the north of Gaul Lake in through there. But this is actually the dividing line between the Kalamazoo River and the Grand River, somewhere around in this area, just north, around north of Cloverdale, or excuse me, of Crooked Lake, Upper Crooked Lake. Go to the next slide. So this is just the overview proposed plan for the, the first two items, the Long Lake Outlet, which is just about 100 feet just west of M43. And again, there's two 20-inch diameter openings and a concrete structure now. They, for the surface water size of Long Lake, those will be considered undersized. And then part of the problem is, is they get clogged very, very easily because they're just such a small opening trying to take in that larger water body. So we are looking to put in a six-by-three box culvert with an effective size, meaning it's going to have a natural bottom of about eight inches or so of basically bottom material from the lake on either side, so that it's a natural bottom for fish passage and for connectivity in through there. So its actual size will be six feet wide by two feet and four inches deep or high. So that's the, now the water has that area to go through rather than just two smaller 20-inch openings, tubes in order to go through. And what this essentially will do will equalize the water then on both sides of that private drive and reduce debris buildup and the chance that, that debris and vegetation causes a backup in the lake. Item two is the new crossing or new called pipe from Cloverdale Lake into Long Lake. This essentially is the Cloverdale Lake Outlet, which controls the water level. Anyone listening in that has, in a separate process, we're going through the lake level process, legal lake level process on Long Lake and Cloverdale. We've got some markers out there. So in order for Cloverdale Lake to go down, it's got to go through a pipe. And right now, it's just a 10-inch pipe. We want to replace that with a deep water intake, meaning that a 36-inch pipe would actually come and be just under the water surface in roughly the same location near the township park boat launch there on Cloverdale. And that'll outlet into Long Lake. And as part of the installing the new pipe, we'll put a control structure just off of the road so that actually the water level in Cloverdale Lake can be controlled with a fixed weir inside of it. And that controls the water level that it has to essentially reach to tip over that weir elevation and then go down into Long Lake. If you go to the, oh, one item to note there is so we have a screen on the end of these intakes, at least at Cloverdale Lake. And it's a basically a series of, starting with the larger size, so very, very fine mesh sized screen. That is for invasive species control, for the vegetation, invasive species vegetation, which both lakes treat forests, you're familiar with. But then also for certain fish species that are invasives. And we did do inventories of these two lake systems as well as Upper Crooked Lake. And fortunately, unfortunately, how you look at it, they, they all pretty much have the same invasive species as far as vegetation goes. Different degrees and varying amounts and the same with fish species. Go to the next slide.
Hey, Mr. C C, just a time check too.
Yeah, I see right here. Okay. So this is detail that I'll let, you can skip over that. It's just a box culvert going, this is the Cloverdale Lake Outlet. Cloverdale is down in the bottom left-hand of your screen. Up on the right-hand side is Long Lake. And you can see the red dot in the middle over near, currently like growth would be the control structure. Go to the next slide. And then item three, four, and five is essentially we're taking the water from our Delton Road Infiltration Basin, which is, if you see the map, there's a star there. That's another screen intake that we put around the intake line of where we'd be pumping out of. So we would pump from that Delton Road Basin into the Delton Marsh. And then from the Delton Marsh, it would flow through and it already does flow in that direction. There's another county drain there that would go into Mud Lake, Jones Lake, and part of the Cloverdale Chain of Lake system. So we're not proposing to make any changes as far as what the culvert is between Delton Marsh on the north side into Jones Lake. Essentially leaving the same. We would discharge upstream of the Delton Marsh into an upland area with a series of checked dams. So that, again, that's another way of invasive species management and control, trying to limit the possibility that invasive species could transfer downstream and throughout the system. Next slide. Yep. And I think we're at our 10 minutes. I'll probably just skip over this. But again, the invasive species management was a big thing. We have screen intakes, discharging the upland areas, trying to settle out anything that, especially like vegetation. One item too is going through that Delton Marsh. Essentially, there's very small portions that have any amount of standing water over six to 12 inches. Most of the vegetation you get in your lakes, it needs several feet of water and depth of water in order to establish. And so therefore, these plant systems can establish in those areas. It settle out and for all intents and purposes, don't transfer downstream. So that's another way of managing it by taking it through this wetland complex where they just can't simply survive. And part of the system too, we will be monitoring the levels and in through here, like I said, we would need to get Long Lake and Cloverdale down first, do that work before we could even begin to take water into the Delton Marsh from our basin and start this process. And I think that's it. I think the last slide, yep, so.
Okay, thanks, Mr. C C. I'm going to keep you unmuted in case we need to answer a question. So you can just mute your, on your end. I'm going to bring the slides back to us here. Alright, so right now we got lots of questions. Don't have a lot of time to take questions though because we've got to start this hearing. But I'm going to go through a few of them here. I think Kelsey and Audrey are hopefully ready there. First one that came in was, what study has been made of the impact on Fall Creek in the city of Hastings? And ultimately on the Thornapple River by dumping their waters into Tolston Lake, which flows out into Fall Creek?
So this is Kelsey. We do have some of our Lansing staff and other biologists that have been involved with reviewing this application. And they will be continuing to be involved with further processing to look into more concerns like, like this. Specifically, I don't know if this would be a good answer or question for Brian, if you want to go into a little bit more detail.
Yeah, so in our correction request, we have, as part of our analysis is looking at essentially what impacts this would have on the downstream water systems. There's a couple of lakes, a couple of smaller lakes, and then obviously Fall Creek in through there and then adjacent wetland areas. So we looked at the crossings that are downstream in place through there. And then we have an analysis in our correction request of what impacts that would have.
Alright, thank you.
To note, one, to at least note is that we're changing the crossing under M43 and that's kind of the controlling item with everything that, that kind of dictates how much water gets through in through here. So from a volume perspective, yes, we are increasing the volume. But from a rate perspective, especially what can discharge the Fall Creek, that's somewhat controlled by that M43 crossing, which we're not increasing.
Alright, thank you. I do see someone's got a hand up for a while. So I'm going to call out Patricia Venzio. Patricia, I just unmuted your line. You can go ahead and ask your question. Patricia Venzio, I unmuted your line. You want to go ahead? Alright, it's like she may not have a question. Okay, so I'm going to, you again, I'm going to go back to our board here. On the, here's the next question. On the end of Long Lake transition to the unnamed stream that becomes the west branch of Fall Creek, will the proposed 24-foot-wide, 20-foot-long temporary access drive through .03 acres of wetland on the north side of North Shore Drive be removed at the project conclusion? And if so, how long will it be in place?
Yes. And the temporary drive is only in place while we install the box culvert there at the end of Long Lake. So if the, you know, anticipated, the contractor may take, you know, three days or two days maybe to get that in. And that temporary drive, it just so residents and emergency services can have access to those properties that are on that drive while we're reconstructing essentially that, that crossing. So it'll be removed then as soon as we're done with installing the actual crossing proposal and that work.
Okay, thanks. Also another hand up, Brandy Neff. Brandy, I'm going to unmute your line here. If you want to go ahead, you're unmuted. Brandy Neff, you're unmuted. So you can go ahead if you're, want to unmute your line and go ahead and talk. Okay. So Brandy Neff, I see you have some questions in here too. And so I can just go ahead and ask a couple of them here. Let's see here. One of your, your questions was just, so, okay, I'm, okay, since I have paperwork from the DNR. My grandfather and I built the drain. The DNR only allowed a 10-inch drain because it would have caused negative impact. What has changed? To Kelsey or anybody got?
Yeah, so the 10-inch was essentially, even though it's a county drain, that 10-inch was done by, I believe, four or five people in 1992 went ahead and that's what they decided to install. And my understanding was the 10-inch was installed and, and planned for because that's what they could afford to put in because it was done by basically five people sharing the cost. The DNR doesn't dictate in cases like that. They were the, they were the reviewing applicant at that point in time for basically what Eagle does now. And so they reviewed the application and approved it, but they don't, they're only going off what the applicant, applicant is asking for, so.
Okay. Alright.
I would just like to add to that, we're still reviewing this project. So things can still change. The 10-inch is probably what they requested back then. And now the applicant is requesting something larger. But we're still reviewing it based, we're still looking at the impacts that that increase could have.
Okay, when the drain was installed in early 19, 1904, and it was a 24-inch, excuse me, it was a ditch basically between the two. And the 36-inch kind of is basically the equivalent size of the ditch they installed when they built it.
Alright guys, we're going to take a couple more questions here for the Clover Lake to Long, for the Cloverdale Lake to Long Lake. All right, guys, we're gonna take a couple more questions here. Uh for the Clover Lake to Long, for the Cloverdale Lake to Long Lake. Will the drain from Cloverdale be adjustable? How will the invasive species screens be cleaned from backing up?
So it it will not be adjusted. Uh or an adjustable thing essentially, and then the screens, um we have a similar screen on another project and we have to clean it. Uh about every two to three months in the summer for vegetation. So just as an example.
All right, another question that's come in was uh why are residents of Long Lake? Cloverdale getting forced to pay for any of this project? The flooding issues are being pushed through our lake, and now we are being expected to pay for a solution for all these other lakes. We should not be forced to pay for this. The cost should be assumed by these other lakes that are having flooding issues and government entities. Not residents of Long Lake Cloverdale.
No. This this just gets into the two drains. No one on Long Lake or Cloverdale is paying anything to do with associated with the work from. The pumping, for example, for Upper Crooked Lake. Um there's two separate drains and drain districts. And I don't believe anyone even on Long Lake is in either of the districts, for example. Uh people on Cloverdale Lake are in that Cloverdale Drain drainage district. And they'll pay for just the stuff associated with the Cloverdale Drain, so that would be the the new outlet between Cloverdale Lake and Long Lake. Um but in this case, they're impacted by what we're proposing, but they're not paying for this. Those two lakes, so.
All right, I'm gonna take one more question. No, there's several more in here, but I wanna take this last one. Uh. Why is Crooked Lake being pumped upstream to Long Lake instead of downstream to the Kalamazoo River?
Quite frankly, the reason is uh in this particular case, there's um especially more environmental impacts we had, we would have if we went to. The the south uh and then if going to the north and through here. And plus, this also allows us to use the Dalton Road Infiltration Basin, which has been the main means for getting the water. As much as we have and fighting off the rain, so uh by using that basin. Uh essentially, the only connection that needs to be made is between that and the Delta Marsh. So there's a lot more impacts if we went to the south than there were if we went to the north, actually.
All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Sensi. Um we did get, uh we we have to start the public hearing now. Uh but we did get several other comments, and these are more comments, not really questions, so. Uh we do have time. We're gonna move into just a moment, the official comment period. So if you do have a comment, that's when you'd wanna make those. And you wanna type the word comment, like I said, in there and say your comment. Um and also, I know Kelsey, you're on the line. If people have questions, um they can email you. Uh your email's the bottom of the screen right there. I know that, and um so that's another good way to get your questions answered about this. So um in terms of what we're have to do now, we'll move into the official public comment part of tonight. So I wanna thank Mr. Sensi for his presentation, for answering questions. Uh in terms of submitting official comment, of course, you can do it tonight. Uh that's not the only way. You can also submit a comment by mail, uh using the uh mailing address listed on your screen. Also via My Waters, which is our online system that we have here at Eagle. And instructions for that there, and also just by sending them to uh Kelsey Crop. And Kelsey's email is there as well, and I'll try to bring that up before we leave again tonight, so. That's how we're gonna do that. And again, uh to provide comment, a couple different ways you can do that. Is that after Kelsey reads off the official hearing statement, uh you can type your comment in to the question box. Make sure you type the word comment. And then you're going to uh type in your comment if you want. Uh you can also click the raise hand icon, and uh so far, I haven't had much luck with it. Uh make sure that you have a working mic, and you might wanna check your audio tab to make sure your correct mic is selected there. On the audio tab on your go-to webinar toolbar, but I'll unmute you and hopefully you can uh make your statement that way. And again, there's the pictures. And right now, I'm gonna turn it over to Kelsey to read off the hearing statement. So Kelsey, you there?
Yep, I'm here.
All right, take it away.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kelsey Crop, and I am the district representative in the Water Resources Division. Of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, Eagle. I will be serving as the hearing officer for this public hearing on Eagle submission number H N R dash E X F E. Dash S V four V nine. With me tonight are other Eagle staff that will be assisting with this hearing. Audrey Kirk, District Supervisor, Grand Rapids District Office. To describe how this is going to work tonight, I'll begin with some background information about why we are here tonight. I will then describe the purpose of the hearing and how your comments will be used. Following that, I will outline the procedures under which we will take your comments and then describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. It will then be time for you to provide comments, and we will spend the majority of time tonight listening to those comments. At the end of the hearing, I'll provide a short summary in closing. By way of background information, the Water Resources Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs. That help protect inland lakes and streams, wetlands, floodplains, sand dunes, and the Great Lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake, stream, or wetland. Constructing a dam, constructing a marina, placing shore protection, or constructing docks. And building in a designated critical sand dune area, wetland, or floodplain. The law governing those responsibilities is the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act nineteen ninety-four. P A four fifty-one as amended. We are here tonight because the Berry County Drain Commissioner has submitted an application for site zero eight dash Dalton Road. Dash Dalton for a permit under part three oh one inland lakes and streams. And part three oh three Wetlands Protection of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act nineteen ninety-four. P A four fifty-one as amended. The applicant has proposed the following. Install a six foot by four inch lake level gauge in Upper Crooked Lake. Install a twenty linear foot long twelve inch suction line, place an upland with a three foot by three foot screen intake structure. That includes a six mesh T three one six screen and twenty-four mesh T three one six screen. Install a twelve inch suction line in the Dalton Road Infiltration Basin to facilitate pumping to the Dalton Marsh. Install a six foot by four inch lake level gauge in front of the screened intake structure for the suction line. The twelve inch suction line will discharge water into the Del and Marsh through riprap. Riprap installed in upland before entering the Delta and Marsh. Install a water level control structure in between the Delta and Marsh and Jones Lake located next to the Delta and Drain and Wetland near Stevens Road. Install a six mesh T three one six and twenty-four mesh T three one six. Screened intake structure in Cloverdale Lake by dredging six cubic yards of wetland near Guernsey Lake Road. That discharges into Long Lake through five hundred and thirty linear feet, thirty-six inch storm sewer. Install forty linear feet of steel sheet piles in front of the screen intake structure. Water pumped from the trench to be discharged through a de-watering bag in upland. Install a control structure between Cloverdale Lake and Long Lake and Wetland. For the outlet to Long Lake, install two point three cubic yards of fill in well and as a storm sewer discharging into Long Lake. Place six point five cubic yards of backfill within well and for the grading slope. Place eight point four cubic yards of M dot heavy riprap within well and around the storm sewer. Place eight point seven cubic yards of M dot heavy riprap over geotextile fabric in wetland along the ordinary high watermark. Of Long Lake below the storm sewer. Install a six foot wide by three foot deep box culvert, twenty-four feet long between Long Lake and an unnamed stream. That ultimately becomes the west branch of Fall Creek. Proposed twenty-four feet wide, twenty feet long temporary access drive through point zero three acres of wetland on the north side. Of North Shore Drive. In order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice meet certain criteria. Set by part three oh one inland lakes and streams and part three oh three Wetlands Protection of Act four fifty-one. In general, we must consider the effect of the proposed project on inland lakes and streams and wetlands. When reviewing an application for a permit under the provisions of part three oh one inland lakes and streams of Act four fifty-one. Eagles charged to make the following considerations as required by section three oh one oh six of part three oh one. One, the department shall issue a permit if it finds that the structure or project will not adversely affect the public trust or apparent rights. Two, the department shall not grant a permit if the proposed project or structure will unlawfully impair or destroy. Any of the waters or other natural resources of the state. When reviewing an application for permit under the provisions of part three oh three Wetlands Protection of Act four fifty-one. Eagles charged to make the following in conditions as required by section three oh three one one of part three oh three. A permit for an active activity listed in section three oh three oh four shall not be approved unless the department determines. That the issuance of a permit is in the public interest, that the permit is necessary to realize the benefits derived from the activity. And that the activity is otherwise lawful. One, a permit shall not be issued unless it is shown that unacceptable disruption will not result to the aquatic resources. Two, a permit shall not be issued unless the applicant also shows either of the following. A, the proposed activity is primarily dependent upon being located in the wetland. B, a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in this application submitted by the Berry County Drain Commissioner. An opportunity to provide information that Eagle can use in making the decision whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that Eagle must use in making a decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the project. We will be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is by law. Not allowed to base our decision on whether or not there is widespread support or opposition for the to the project. In just a moment, I will outline the procedures we will use for taking your comments, but before I do so. I need to mention that the notice of this hearing was published in the Reminder Newspaper, May ninth, twenty twenty. To ensure that the hearing gets conducted in a fair manner, we will follow these steps. One, as we discussed at the beginning of the information session, if you have a comment to provide, click on the question box in your go-to webinar toolbar. And under the word comment and your name. First, the applicant and or their consultant has already had an opportunity to describe the proposed project. Two, he will then call on those who have indicated in the comment box that they would like to speak in the general order they were received. Three, as a reminder, if you are participating in this hearing via telephone only, you will not be able to provide comments during this hearing. However, you may still submit your comments to Eagle via My Waters. Email me at crop K one at Michigan dot gov. That'll be K R U P P K one. At Michigan dot gov or through U S Mail. When your name is called, please make your statement. If you have written comments or have materials that you would like to present. Please email them, upload them into My Waters, or send them via U S Mail to the district office. When all the comments have been completed, you will will ask if anyone else would like to make a statement. When your name is called, as you begin your comments, please state your name and any group or association you may represent. Each person will be given five minutes to make their comments. We will indicate to you when you have thirty seconds left. Please begin wrapping up your comments and end within the allotted time. If need be, I will indicate when your time has ended. I ask that we all be curious and respectful to one another tonight. Please also recognize that Eagle staff is here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed project. And to listen to those concerns. This hearing is being recorded, and your comments will be part of the information Eagle will consider in making its decision. On whether or not to issue a permit on the proposed project. The public comment period for this public hearing is open for ten days, starting today and ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during the ten day public comment period will also be considered in Eagle's decision. Additional information and comments may be submitted to the file via My Waters. To email to me, Kelsey Crop, or via U S Mail to the Grand Rapids District Office. State Office Building, fifth floor, three fifty Ottawa Avenue, northwest, unit ten, Grand Rapids, Michigan. Four nine five oh three dash two three four one. Following the close of the public comment period, you will make a decision to either issue a permit for the for the project as proposed. Or with modifications, or send a letter of denial. You may find out what the decision is by checking the Eagle My Waters website at the link provided in the webinar slides. And search for the submission number H N R dash E X F E dash S V four Z nine. Thank you for your attention. We will begin calling the names of those who have indicated that they would like to make a statement.
All right, thanks, Chelsea. Um or Kelsey, I'm sorry. Uh I just wanna make a couple of things clear. Um. If you, uh some people are typing in comments right now. Um just be clear, I will be reading those comments that are typed in. As part of the public record. If for some reason you not want me to read off your comment, please indicate that in your comment. Um that you do not want me to read it um over the over the um over the air here. Uh if you've already submitted it, you don't wanna read it, just send me a note right now and and I'll do my best not to read it. Um but these are coming in, and please make sure, you know, your comments, if you could try to be um put them all in the one line. I'm getting a few that are coming in in different pieces, so that's gonna make them a little hard to read. Um so I'm, I also have a list of people who have already requested to speak. Um when they're registered, so I'm gonna start with that list because they did already our request to make a comment when they uh signed up for this. So the first person, and I gotta, and I do have a timer here that I'm gonna try to use, uh hang, bear with me. I know that Audrey's also helping um with the timing. Um the person I had, first person asked to make comment was Ashley Litchfield. Uh Ashley Litchfield, uh I don't see you signed in here to the meeting. So if you are signed in and they're a different name, you'll wanna raise your hand or type your comment in. Um going down my list, the next person I have on my list is Gary Mu- Mewesen. So uh Gary Mewesen, I'm going to find your name here, and I'm I'm meeting you right now, so you can go ahead and uh. Make your comment, sir. Gary Mewesen, M E E U W S E N. I have a meeting here. I can see you're trying to unmute, and you keep muting yourself there. So go ahead and. Okay, sir, I'm gonna come back to you later, I guess, if we can. Uh the next person we have up is uh Emily Wilkey. Emily Wilkey, I just unmuted your line, so go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Um so I am Emily Wilkey. I work for the Southwest Michigan Land Conservancy. And um I'd like to speak today to go on public record, but I'll also submit um. A full statement with uh more thoughts that I'm gonna cover here to you. Um so we have a.
Uh Ms. Wilkey, you just muted yourself again.
Sorry, sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we got you.
Okay. Okay, so um I'm not sure how much, I'm not sure. So you heard, so we have a conservation easement that is a hundred and seventy acres. And it fully encompasses Schultz Lake. So the proposed water would be flowing from Long Lake under M forty-three into Schultz Lake. Which um then has a dam to hold Schultz Lake, and then the water flows from there into into Fall Creek. And the property was first identified as a very important natural area by Lou Bats. And um it it was identified a long time ago as a one of the most important areas to conserve. And the owner thankfully worked with us to put a conservation easement on the property, which protects it in perpetuity. From ever being further developed, and we are. Need to uphold the conservation values on the property, and that is the duty of the Southwest Michigan Land Conservancy. The um proposal would likely increase water flow into the system, and it is all. and it is already very high as it is throughout all of Southwest Michigan. And so more water into the system could be devastating to adjacent uplands. And it, we don't know, we don't know exactly how it would affect the property. There is, um, there's not been any research done about what the water levels are currently or what they would be with the, with applicant's proposal. And, um, and we're just scared that we don't, because we, there's a lot of unknowns. We also worked with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and Ducks Unlimited to get, uh, you, uh, North American Wetland Conservation Act grant. And with that grant, we, we bought and installed a very nice, strong dam that's on the property that's holding Schultz Lake. And it has fish passage, fish passage. And, um, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has say over the land for 25 years. And I, so they would need to be consulted and the landowner is also not in favor of these activities. And the property would have to be taken through condemnation. The, we are not in favor of these proposed activities because we don't know how we're going to be impacting the conservation values on the land and it is our duty to make sure that they are not damaged in any way. And that's pretty much all we have to say. And I will submit a full, a full comment and writing as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll mute your line. Somebody else did ask a question about if they had already made a comment, written comment, do they need to speak up tonight? And, uh, have I corrected me, but Ron, Kelsey, the answer is no, you don't have to make comment tonight as well. You just have to do one or the other, right?
For, for it to be on the record, um, they could do it now or do kind of the other means we mentioned earlier with the, the mail, putting it on the My Waters, um, or emailing it to me.
Right, but if you already made a comment written in before this hearing, I guess, they don't have to do it again tonight. Or, or just during the hearing, they don't have to do it again, correct?
Um, I believe that is correct. Audrey, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yep, that is correct, that you just need to make the comment one time, um, using any of those options.
All right, thank you for clearing that up. All right, so the next person that requested to speak is, uh, Bill Kruger. Bill Kruger, I just unmuted your microphone, so you can unmute your line and go ahead.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me right now?
Yep, we hear you.
Okay, great. So I represent the Healthy Water Alliance, which represents Cloverdale, Wilkinson, Jones, and Mud Lakes. And I'm concerned about what protections have been put in place from getting invasives which exist in Crooked Lake that don't exist in our lake chain. We've already got a battle going on right now with trying to control some of the invasives that are in our lakes. And we're concerned that zebra mussels, which we understand are present, as well as starry stone, stonewall, which is present in Crooked Lake. What protections are in place to guarantee that they don't migrate into our lakes and create tomorrow's problem for us? And that's really, that's, that's like, that's a question that I'm asking and a comment. Is there anybody that can speak to that?
During the hearing, we don't answer questions, it's just for comments.
Okay, well, there's my, and that's, we, we put that on the public record. It's, we are making a public record that there needs to be a, an assurance that, um, that there's adequate protections have been put in place from preventing of an invasive that exists in one lake and now you're going to introduce the water from that lake into another lake chain. And so I think all of us downstream are very concerned about it. So consequently, uh, we, we would be, uh, we are asking and saying, and want to go on record as saying something has to be put in place before a permit is, is granted that says, that guarantees that these species can't migrate into this lake chain. And that'll be, that's the end of my public statement.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You know, I got, I got one more comment, sorry, one more comment. From a standpoint of, of, this is a, this is a personal, um, for me representing myself. The water structure, we do have a high water problem on our lakes. So, um, I think having a permanent water structure in place at Crooked Lake going into Long Lake is something that, um, I personally am in favor of. And I know they've given a lot of, um, the survey that's out there right now asking about the water level. And, uh, uh, so I think we're just asking that you respect the request of all of our residents to what that high water level should be. And that's the end of my public comment. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. And I'll apologize, I don't think my clock's working, so I'm going to make sure that, um, we have Audrey or Kelsey keep track of time. Every time I touch my screen, the clock stops. Sorry about that, folks. So Audrey, if you're going to keep time, just go ahead and break in when, um, when it's time, when they got a minute or 30 seconds left, like, like you said. The next person, pardon?
Just, yep, will do.
Okay, great, thanks. Uh, the next person that requested to speak was, uh, Brian Nunley. Brian, I'm finding your name here and I am unmuting you, so go ahead, Brian. Brian, your mic's unmuted, so you can, you can speak. Okay, I don't think Brian's on, so we'll go to the next person. Rot, Roberto Zuniga. Roberto, I am looking for your name here. And, uh, Mr. Zuniga, I have unmuted you, so you can unmute on your end and go ahead and make your comment, sir.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, just had some concerns here on Long Lake. And I guess my comment is that we're taking water from Upper Crooked and they do have a public sewer going into the other chain of lakes. And it's my understanding that only a small portion of Cloverdale Lake is on the sewer system. So we've got this chain of lakes that has septic all around it. And that's being pumped now at even greater volume into Long Lake. Uh, and I'm just concerned that's going to have a, an impact on us that are downstream. And, uh, that's my comment.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, next person that's requested to speak is Alice Gutsy. Um, I'm, I'm meeting your line right now, Alice Guts, Gutsky?
Yep, I'm here.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, my comment is, uh, we've, we've been on Long Lake for 40 years and we, we've never had this much problem with flooding until the last five years about. I've noticed lots of water along M43 and there's, there's water going over 43 at Dalton there at Cloverdale. And I just feel like there's something that has been done to the, maybe the drain system up there that has changed it just the last five years. Cause we've never had this amount of problem with flooding in any lake in that area. So that is my one comment. And my second comment is, when I, when I drive, I'm a resident on Long Lake. And when I drive through that little area and I can see, uh, Clover, Cloverdale Lake, which a person can't swim in there, you can't boat in it, you probably could fish in it. There are so many weeds on that lake. I'm always very grateful for Long Lake where we've stepped up, got the sewers, paid the money. We got the weed treatment, we paid for weed treatment. And I'm, I'm definitely afraid that three, four, five years down the road, those lakes are going to be identical. When you start mixing that water, there's no way you're going to keep those invasive species from one lake there and keep Long Lake not looking like that lake. You're mixing the waters, the lakes are going to look the same. And to solve one lake's problem, say Crooked Lake, which I, I still don't understand why that's coming. While you're pumping that up instead of going south, I, that part I don't understand. But, but when you start mixing the water of all the lake, they're all going to look the same. And, and I'm just fearful for Long Lake, which has really stepped up and taken care of their lake to these other lakes, they have not done that kind of care. And that is my comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next person I have on my list here is Bruce Young. Bruce Young, I'm, I'm meeting your line, so go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, this is Bruce Young. I'm a resident on Long Lake. My overall concern is tied to the, the lake level of Long Lake. And as I understand the box culvert that Brian was explaining, first of all, I saw in the drawings that there's a future plan where there may be stainless steel slats which would be added to the face of the box culvert. In essence, what that would do, would it, would help to establish our lake level. So in the event that the water decided to get too low, the slat system would regulate us. My second concern is maybe what the first lady said. Downstream, has the study proven that the downstream Fall Creek and the swamp and all of that downstream infrastructure can take the extra water that Long Lake is being asked to absorb? So in, in, the bottom line for me is to try to be a good neighbor for all of these lakes and all of these people. I don't want Long Lake to go drastically high or drastically low. And the box culvert design, the way I see it right now, by putting cobblestone on the bottom of the lake and hoping that sets our lake level, I don't feel like we're being protected properly with this potential solution. That's the end of my comment. Did you, did you hear my comment?
Yes, this is Kelsey. Yes, we did.
Okay, I said I was finished, so I didn't hear anybody confirm that that went through.
Thank you. I'm not sure what happened to Jim's audio. Let's see if we can get him back here.
Oh, sorry, sorry about that. Yep, my audio just went for just a minute. I apologize for that, you guys. Thank you for stepping in, Kelsey, for a minute. All right, so, um, we did get, we did use your comment, thank you. The next person I have up is, um, Richard Franklin. So, Richard Franklin, I am going to unmute your mic. It's now unmuted on my end, so you just got to unmute your mic and you can speak. And then, yep, go ahead. Go ahead, sir. Okay, just to make it a little easier, I think, because some people might not be prepared when I call your name and I totally understand that. Um, I'm just going to basically give the who's on deck as well. So, um, Mr. Franklin will come back to you in just a minute, uh, if you need to get your microphone situated. Uh, I'm going to go next to, uh, the next couple of people up are going to be, um, let's see here, uh, Greg Lake and then Kim Sanwald. So Greg Lake is first and Greg, let me go to your name here and I'm going to unmute you. So stand by just a minute here. Greg Lake, you are now unmuted, so go ahead.
Okay, um, I guess, I, I thought this started at seven o'clock, so I apologize for really not knowing what's been addressed here. But I guess my concern is everybody's talked about the water level in Long Lake, about it being high. I guess my, one of my concerns is I agree that it's high right now, but I'm concerned about it being lowered too much. Uh, my beach area is pretty shallow already. If we go down too much, then I'm going to have the opposite problem. But I guess that's my concern. And the other comment I have is, like the one lady said, why isn't this going south like the natural flow should be? Just seems counterproductive, be trying to pump it north when it should be going south. Uh, that is my comments.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, uh, so next couple of people we have up are going to be, uh, Kim Sanwald next. And then after that is going to be John Heavy. So, Kim Sanwald, I'm going to find your name here. And it looks like I don't have a Kim Sanwald on my list. So, uh, Kim Sanwald, if you want to make comment, you're under a different name signed in. You probably have just raised your hand and we'll go to you. Um, next person is John Heavy. So, uh, Mr. Heavy, hold on a second. John Heavy, I've just unmuted your line, so go ahead. You have to unmute yourself now. There you go.
I think I did.
There you go. You got, you're, you're ready to go now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I have a couple of comments. One, I think in order for this to go forward, there should be some mechanism included to verify the quality of the wa, new water being introduced into waterways where it wasn't previously, previously entered into. And also, um, to monitor that on an ongoing basis. In other words, all water quality is not the same. And you don't want to create problems by introducing that water into a new lake. Also, I think there should, needs to be some assurances that these invasive species, and one of the previous comments addressed that also. These greens, uh, when they're maintained, if they remove them, then all of a sudden your invasive, uh, species protection is gone temporarily and can allow that to transfer. So I think there should be a mechanism to, uh, to safeguard that from happening. And that's the two comments that I had.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, next two people up are going to be, uh, Brandy Neff and then Lawrence Hesslinga. Um, so Brandy Neff, I've just unmuted your line, go ahead.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name's Kevin Wilson. I had to register on a different computer. I don't have the internet at my house because I don't have electricity. I don't have electricity because I have three foot of water. Not like in the front of my house or in the back corner, but my grandfather's house has effectively been sunk. Okay, so we'll get to that part of my comment in a minute, but
Excuse me, sir, can you just clarify your name for our record though? Cause on here it's listed as Brandy.
Kevin, Kevin Carl Wilson. Seven, one, eighty-six. I'm at seven, eight, no, seven, nine, five, oh, I'm, I'm at seven, eight, nine, two, South M43 right now. I'm at seven, nine, five, oh, South M43 most of the time. So if any of you good folks over there on Long Lake would like to get in touch with me down here on Cloverdale Lake, I think you might have some facts presented to you about the narrative you've been given from the county and other people that maybe might jerk your neck a little bit. I've got a black folder that's about four inches thick. I've been compiling data for the last year, actually. A few of you folks have seen me come to your houses over there door to door. Now, first thing I'd like to say in, in my actual comment is that this is by no means a public hearing, nor should it be regarded as such because there is no way for anyone with any sort of a disability, a, a permanent disability, something like, you know, a blind person, a deaf person. There's people out here who can't hear or see, who would love to be privy to the things that are being spoken about here that are not. That is a problem. That is very problematic. This is not a public meeting by definition, by law, what has legally been established by the legislature in Michigan. This is actually contrary to the Open Public Meetings Act and everything that's been said in them. I mean, there's some little parts that fit the bill, but this is not, not a public hearing, y'all. I'd like that to be first and foremost known. Secondly, I'd like to reiterate that if anyone wants to come see me down here on Cloverdale Lake and y'all from Long Lake, come please and talk to me and talk to us down here because like I said, you'll get a different story. Us here, us on Cloverdale Lake, we don't want this water pushed on you in any way. Us here, us on Cloverdale Lake, we don't want this water pushed on you in any way, shape, or form. We don't agree with it, no more than we would agree with it being dumped on us. Now, I would invite anyone else also to go back there and look at that retention pond, as they're calling it, the infiltration basin, because it is no longer that. It is a area now of proposed lake construction. It is a fifteen acre lake, and that's what it says on the permit on the board when you walk up to it at the site. And I would encourage you people on Long Lake to get your butts up there and take a good gander at that site and that plan because it has changed into something completely different than it was ever okay to be. They literally are building a lake to dump on us. They're not talking about pumping a little bit of water through some pumps. Now, right now, what's happening on the backside of Pine Lake, on Tom Law's property, on the backside of Robert Jones' property, is the ground's becoming saturated. What we're gonna look at in the next three to five years is the possibility of a mudslide. Yeah, California-style, man-created, infrastructural mudslide. It's coming. You go back there, you look, there are oak trees that are sixty feet tall under four foot of water. That's not a joke. They are planning this thing, have been planning this thing. I've exposed it last year. I let everybody know what they were doing back there in their retention pond. The day after Eagle left, Jim Doll started pumping another five hundred yards of pipe straight into the Robert Jones' property, which empties into our floodplain. There isn't some sort of line maybe between the Kalamazoo watershed and the Lower Grand River watershed. That line is Dalton Road, and it's a topographical barrier that was set ten thousand years ago, glaciers. They're pumping through it horizontally, laterally, I don't know, up, down, sideways, doesn't matter, shouldn't be going through there, folks. They're pumping from Kalamazoo where I let me remind you, there's a there's a billion billion dollar super PAC from an oil spill that happened in the Kalamazoo River. That's Crooked Lakes water. They're gonna put that in down here on us and the natural, beautiful state land side of Berry County. I say let them keep it up there in their all-sports lakes and let them do their thing. There's no reason for Long Lake to change. It's beautiful. It's been maintained. It's gorgeous. Y'all should keep it that way. You have the power on Long Lake to do this. Us on Cloverdale Lake, we don't have the money. We don't have the numbers. You can do it on Long Lake. Just stick to your guns about this thing, folks. That's my public comment. And again, if you want to get ahold of me, my phone number is two six nine six eight nine eight seven eight one. You can call me twenty-four hours a day, and if you need any help on your property, anything like that, I'm thirty years old and I got energy. So you guys go ahead and give me a call. Two six nine.
Kevin, you have one minute.
Eight one. Have a good day, everyone. Okay, you can take it, Audrey. And let everyone know, too, Audrey Kirk, she's aware of all of this. She was the one flying back and forth to the chopper last year. She's been aware of this. She diverted me to her superiors when she didn't want to answer my questions anymore.
All right, thank you, sir.
Eighty-two years old, shouldn't be running the show either. Have a good day, y'all.
Thank you so great comments. Okay, we've got the next person up is Lawrence Heslinga. Lawrence Heslinga, I am moving down to your name, and I just unmuted your line, so you can go ahead and make your comment now, sir.
Hi, I'm here.
We're here, yeah.
I submitted a list of nine questions, concerns yesterday via my waters, so there's no need to repeat those tonight. I do ask, though, that you take those comments and concerns that I submitted into consideration as you review this current application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next person I have on my, yes, go ahead.
Jim, real quick, I think you missed Brandy. Did we skip over Brandy? Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry, Kevin missed Brandy. My bad.
Okay, yeah.
Continue, please.
All right, no problem. Okay, the next person I have up here is Brian Sensi. Now, Brian, I don't know if you have your comment or or not. Hold on a quick second. I know you were talking to us earlier, but I have unmuted your line. If you have an official comment, you can make that now.
No, all I want to do is take my five minutes at the end, once everyone does their questions, the comments is all.
Okay, we can come back to you, sir, if you, yeah, go ahead and raise your hand at the end.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that takes care of everyone who asked to comment ahead of time. So I am just going to, at this point, go ahead and look at my board to see if there's anybody here that's raised their hand, who has not spoken already. And I'm looking down my board now and I'm not seeing anybody yet. Again, if you want to speak over the line, just go ahead and do that. I'm gonna go back really quick to a couple of people who I tried earlier, just to make sure we get you. So the first person I'm going to try is I'm just I made a note of this, is Gary Mussum. And then I'm gonna try Brian Nunley. So Gary, before, we weren't able to hear you. So Gary, I'm gonna go to you again and unmute your lines. So Gary, if you're there, you can go ahead and talk. Okay, so Gary's not on it. If for some reason you're having troubles, just feel free to type a comment into the question box, sir. The other person is Brian Nunley. So Brian Nunley, I'm going through here and I'm unmuting your lines. So Brian, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I, my stuff has already been addressed.
Okay, I think you have a couple of phones on there because we're getting some feedback, but do you have a comment?
No, I'm good here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, and just checking here, the other person was Richard Franklin that asked to speak. Richard Franklin, I'm going to see if we can get you back on again here in just a moment. Just finding your name here. And you are not on. So, okay. All right, so I'm going to Audrey and Kelsey. We've got some comments that have come in over the comment board. And so I'm looking at those, and I will read those unless somebody's indicated they do not want me to read them. Hold on one moment here. Okay, I'm just scrolling through my list of comments here to make sure I start at the beginning. We have several, and I will read these off. Okay, so first comment came in from Alice Gutske. You did already make a verbal comment. I will read it off here again. What you wrote in was, "I am not happy that Long Lake is being used to support all these other lakes without sewers. Those other lakes look horrible. You can't even boat, let alone swim in them. In a few short years, Long Lake will be lost to these weeds as well. It doesn't solve anything to help one lake while ruining another." Okay, going on to our next comment from Bruce Young. "I do not agree with the plan for box culvert. I propose the stainless steel slab be used now to protect the desired lake level on Long Lake." Okay. And a couple of these are questions, and so like I said, questions cannot be addressed at during the comment period. If you do have questions, I will put Kelsey's email address up there at the end. You can direct questions to her. I do have a comment here from a Joseph Frey. The comment is, "Bacterial discharge and mitigation of such discharge into Long Lake was not addressed during this hearing. When and how will this be mitigated?" Okay, I've got comment from Oh, I think I already read that one. Yes, I did. I got another comment here from Joseph Frey. Joseph Frey, "Long Lake, given the twenty nineteen outbreak of equine encephalitis in Michigan and especially southwest Michigan, I am concerned about concerned that the expansion of larval habitat on the primary EEE vector Coliseta malinora will contribute to the proliferation of the disease." Okay, we have a comment here from Susan Bauer. And that is, "Keep water level of the four chain of lakes Mud, Jones, Wilkinson, Cloverdale to a reasonable height to allow boat travel through the channels." Thank you. Okay. Okay, I got a comment from Richard Franklin, who says comment is, "I am concerned about increased volume in Fall Creek in the city of Hastings due to additional water flowing into Tillotsin Lake and eventually out into Fall Creek. This creek runs through my backyard and many other yards in Hastings and already floods its banks during significant rain events and spring melt. I am also concerned that a temporary plan could become a permanent one if the planned later, if the if the planned later steps don't happen for any of a variety of reasons." Thank you, Richard Franklin. Okay, I've got a comment here again from Alice Gutske. Comment is, "The online meeting with Eagle was full of misinformation and poorly ran. I cannot trust anything this department does." We've got a comment here from David Elliott. It's a bit longer. The comment is, "It is obvious that there is a high water issue on both Crooked Lake and Cloverdale Lake. It is understandable to want to address those high water issues. As a resident of Wilkinson Lake, I have two concerns. One, that the invasive species, both flora and fauna in the Crooked Lake, needs to be stopped from entering the chain of lakes. The second concern is that if the water level has dropped substantially in Cloverdale and Wilkinson Lake, that the channel between the two lakes remains open as the only public boat launch for Cloverdale, Wilkinson, Jones, and Mud Lake in Cloverdale Lake." Okay, and we did have another comment come in from Joseph Frey. Joseph Frey, "Long Lake. While wetlands provide many beneficial ecosystem services, they are also reservoirs for mosquito larvae and disease proliferated by mosquitoes." Okay, those are the comments that have come in through the question box comment board. I am now looking to check to see if anyone else out there has got their hand raised. And just to remind you, all the comments that come in through the comment box, too, we do have report of those, and those are given to Kelsey and Audrey at the end to be included as part of the record. So just to let everybody know that in case if I did read your, read it the wrong way or something, they do have them. They'll have the written version of it as well. So I'm looking for any more hand raised, and I'll give people a few more minutes to decide if you want to. And I'll remind you, too, by the way, if you did have, if you're trying to raise your hand and not calling on you, it might be because there's a weird quirk of the system. So feel free to type in there that you'd like to make a comment into the comment box, and I will go ahead and do that. I do see. Okay, I got a couple more comments just came in. Comment from Brandy Neff, "Water levels should be restored to the nineteen ninety-three levels that that's when things were flowing like they were supposed to." A comment from Joseph Frey. "These projects will expand the wetland significantly." They do have a comment here from Brandy Neff. He says, "I didn't get your comments read. And I'm sorry, sir, about that. After you typed in your earlier comments and I clarified that I will read them, you said no." So I had thought that you meant that you did not want me to read your comments. But I see your have your hand raised, so I mean, I, we're going through here, or I guess I already called on you. I'm going through to see if anybody else has got their hand raised. And I just want to remind everybody that if you did submit a comment through the comment box, that we are submitting them all to our staff here for response to comment that they'll be put in there. All right, so it looks like I'm gonna go to for, oh, yep, okay, well, Brandy did clarify he wants comments read. Okay, that's fine. I'm gonna go through here, and thanks you all for bearing with us as we move to this online format. The situation where we are in right now is kind of complicated, so we're trying to do our best with these with these online hearings. So bear with us here. I'm going up to see if I can catch Brandy's comments that he submitted. Okay, so I'll read these off. This is from Brandy Neff. It says, "You, Audrey, are more than aware of what Jim Doll is doing. You know, and I have all of your conversations recorded. You know very well that the lake on the Robert Jones' property is running straight out of that back hill next to Tom Law's property through to Pine Road. You know, B.C., I made you aware. You people told me that it was a retention pond that held a certain amount of water. That was a lie, and now it is a lake. We had three foot of water in our house all summer with Jim's pumps on when cool weather came, and they quit pumping in Crooked. They stopped the flow at all winter, and we had no, we had no, and I mean no, water in the house. When the ice melted, everything was a little high, but not in the house. Jim turned the M forty-three pump on, and in forty-eight hours, we had two point five feet of water in the house." The other comment was, "Brandy Neff, this lake Cloverdale should be six feet lower. BTW, it still doesn't meet the legal requirements for a public meeting." Brandy Neff comment, "I have several videos of eco impact." And let's see. Brandy Neff comment, "We agree with you here on Cloverdale, Mrs. Wilkinson." Okay, I think I got through all of them, sir. And now I am going to check my board again. Oh, here's another comment from Joseph Frey. "I feel it's important to conduct studies to understand the potential second and third order effects to the communities impacted by these projects." That was by Joseph Frey. And Mr. Brian Sensi, Brian, you still there? I'm gonna unmute your mic because you have your hand up, and you said you wanted to make a comment, please.
Yep, I'm still here. So yep, I'm just gonna at least try to answer a couple of questions that were answered and make a few comments. One of the things to start, when I was talking, there was a question on the someone about paying for the the costs and the drain. The Long Lake, people on Long Lake are in the Cloverdale Drain District, but when we break it out for the drain costs, they're gonna be looking to pay for the work that's associated with the new crossing on Long Lake. And then any of the legal lake level stuff is is paid for separately and has nothing to do with the drain. But neither of these will pay for anything to do with the Watson Drain, which is the upper Crooked Lake work. So neither anybody on Cloverdale or anybody on Long Lake will pay for anything to do with the Watson Drain at all. So.
or anybody on Long Lake will pay for anything to do with the Watson Drain at all. So, um, one thing to point out in the presentation, this is a, this is the second step in our plan process of three steps. And again, this is just a temporary plan as far as having infrastructure in place to do this emergency pumping relief. The long-term plan is again, to take it to the south through infiltration beds, infiltration system. As such, they put a time limit on, um, they can put a time limit on how long the state could that uh, this could be done for. For example, like it typically permits are issued and the work has to be done within five years. So like all the pump posing and everything like we had for pumping between the Dalton Road infiltration basin to the Delta Marsh, that, um, is just laid on the ground and is all temporary infrastructure. And again, this is meant to be a system that is just to take this initial amount of water down off of upper the lake. Getting into some of the comments and questions, uh, there was some initial stuff regarding the Southwest Land Conservancy had some concern. They have done a project and in regards to how they set up that Schultz Lake and the Schultz wetland around it to function. Um, they essentially, for all intensive purposes, pretty much control the water level on Long Lake by the way that they have their, um, dam structure set up and spillway elevation setup, uh, which is fairly high as there's a lot of upland woods and wooded trees, uh, in standing water along that system. So, um, it is, it is fair to say that, um, we've had to go through an extensive amount of impact study and survey work in order to look at this temporary plan that we're looking to do for a one or two-year period. Uh, when they, their permit, there wasn't anything that had to be looked at downstream for the dam structure that they put in as far as it looking, uh, they go to the same place, Fall Creek. So, um, there was invasive species concern. Um, we understand the mussels issue. That's why we've got the, the two different screen systems put in place, which those screen mesh are far below the size, even the reproductive size for anything for the mussels to be established. And then by discharging them to an upland area, meaning an area not wetland or not in water. And then we basically set up a series of sumps where these, um, anything in that water can settle out, uh, prior to even getting into the Delta Marsh. And then once it's in the Delta Marsh, that water has got to make its way through 80 acres of marsh wetland without much standing water in those areas. Uh, there's typically six to 12 inches. So a lot of those aquatic vegetative species, they cannot establish in those areas. And again, it's just more, uh, time, uh, in which that water, anything that
One minute.
Okay, can settle out in that area. The issue on Long Lake, someone raised concern with the weed and mixing of the waters and whatnot. The vegetation that's on Long Lake is far more to do with, uh, what is the depth of Long Lake as compared to Cloverdale and Wilkinson. Those are much shallower lakes. Um, both lakes do weed treatment of some of the same species, some different. Um, and that has a part to do with it as well. Um, we are going through an extensive study on the impacts downstream and we already have done some of that in the application as well. Um, we've been monitoring levels. Uh, we've done water quality testing uh, as part of the stuff that we included, uh, to the state and we're monitoring the levels of the, our Dalton Road infiltration basin, which we did have to go through a permit to do a lake establishment because it got over five acres in size. So that was planned and part of our permit process. So the last thing is the Upper Crooked Lake and Lower Crooked Lake, um, they have no outlet for their water. So it's
Five minutes.
Okay. No problem.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, I am looking down my list for raised hands of people who haven't commented yet. And, um, I will give you a moment if you haven't commented yet. If you'd like to make a comment to do so. Uh, while doing that, I want to remind everybody that comments that were submitted to the comment box will be provided to our staff here as part of the record. And also that this hearing is being recorded and we will post it. Uh, and for those of you that did provide email addresses, we'll let you know when it's available. Checking here, I thought I saw another hand up. Um, I have a hand up here from Jim Doll. So, uh, Jim Doll, I've unmuted your, I'm trying to unmute your line, but it says you are offline. So I don't know if that means that you have hung up or just listening in on a phone. But unfortunately, I can't unmute you because it says you're offline. So if you're having trouble, you might have to log back in. I'll give them a second here and I'm checking to see if anybody else has not commented yet or has raised their hand and has not had a chance to make a comment. And we are running quite a bit past our time, uh, for this, but I'm waiting to see if anybody else still has a comment here. Okay, Mr. Doll, um, looks like you're back on and I have trying to unmute your line, but it won't unmute. I'll stand by. So unfortunately, sir, it doesn't seem like it's letting me unmute your mic. Like, I'm not sure why. So I don't know if it's a certain way that you've logged in or what, but, um, it won't let me. I don't know if it's a problem on your end or our end here. Okay, so if you do have a comment, uh, you go, feel free to type it in the comment box and we'll catch it that way. Or of course, you can always, uh, send it in through the other, other ways that we have available to you. Um, with that, um, yeah, Kelsey, you there still?
I'm here.
Okay, uh, yeah. So do you want us to run through your, uh, run through your closing comments, I guess? Because I'm not seeing any other hands raised.
All right, I will go ahead and read the closing statement. Um, "Thank you for your comments and cooperation. We appreciate your interest in the proposed project and that you took the time to be here tonight. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you may submit additional written comments until May 31st, 2020. Following the close of the public comment period, we will consider all comments received and make a decision on the proposed project. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again."
Okay, thanks, Kelsey. Um, and I'm just gonna bring up here really quick your contact information. Uh, so Kelsey Krupp, uh, yours phone number. And, uh, for those of you listening on the line who may not be logged in, Kelsey, you want to read off your phone number and email address for everybody?
Sure thing. Um, so again, kind of the different ways that you can reach us or me. Um, our office is the Grand Rapids District Office. It'll be, um, on the fifth floor, 350 Ottawa Avenue Northwest, Unit 10, Grand Rapids, Michigan, 49503-2341. Or my work cellphone is 616-401-1201. And my email is gonna be krupk1@michigan.gov. That'll be K-R-U-P-P-K-1@M-I-C-H-I-G-A-N.gov.
All right. Thank you, Chelsea. Kelsey, I'm sorry. Don't know why I said Chelsea. Apologize for that. Um, I'm just gonna throw this up here for a minute while I'm doing a wrap up. So I want to thank everyone for joining us. I, I think we have a couple other people on the line from Eagle. Um, I don't know if, uh, Audrey is still on the line and if you want to make a comment there, Audrey, or anybody else?
Yeah, uh, this is Audrey and I just wanted to say thank you, everyone, for your input. Uh, Kelsey and I listened in to two other public hearings before this one to see kind of how they went and uh, they did not have the amount of public input that we had with this one. So the comments do, are hugely helpful and they, they help us work through the process and make sure all the concerns are addressed. So I just wanted to say thank you so much. It's really appreciated.
Thanks, Audrey. And yeah, I want to thank everybody for, for sticking with us and being flexible. I know this is a tough time and, um, we're trying to be adaptable here and make these public, uh, comment sessions, information sessions, um, open like this, uh, online. And, um, you know, thanks for joining us tonight. Like I said, we'll be posting it online and if anybody has questions, you can, again, you can email Kelsey. So thanks, everybody, for joining us and, uh, have a great evening. Thank you.